Good evening and welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Meeting, November 21st, 2022, 6:00 PM. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
Acting City Attorney Doctor. I'm sorry. I apologize. Hakalak, here. City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on the nation, the government, individual, liberty, justice for all. We've received, we've received amendments from 5:23, 6:06, 6:27, to 10 and 10:04. Do we have any addition, subtraction, corrections to make? If not, the meeting will stand as submitted. Board Appointments. I am recommending the following board appointments. Gulf Advisory Board, appointment of Colin Brown to an interim term on the Gulf Advisory Board as citizen member. Interim term will begin upon appointment and expire October 30th, 2023. Appointment of Susan Court to a first term on the Gulf Advisory Board as a citizen member. Term will expire October 31st, 2025. Helena Housing Authority. Appointment of Mary Collins to a first term on the Helena Housing Authority, and she's no relative of mine. Helena Housing Authority as a resident representative, term will expire August 1st, 2024. ADA Compliance Committee. Appointment of Bobby Calphill to a first term to the ADA Compliance Committee as a citizen at large. Representative term will expire September 1st, 2025. Board of Adjustment. Appointment of Michael Newhouse to an interim term on the Board of Adjustment as an alternative member. Interim term will begin upon appointment and expire October 30th, 2024. Business Improvement District. Appointment of Randy Burnton to a first term on the Business Improvement District as a board member. Term will expire October 31st, 2025. Appointment of Onawa Linden to an interim term on the Business Improvement District as a board member. Interim term will begin upon appointment and expires October 31st, 2023. Lewis and Clark County Heritage Tourism Council. Appointment of Jessica Ollwelt to a first term on the Lewis and Clark County Heritage Tourism Council as a city resident. Term will expire June 30th, 2025. Non-Motorized Travel Advisory Council. Appointment of Joyce Frenzen to an interim term on the Non-Motorized Travel Advisory Council as a citizen. As a citizen member, interim term will begin upon appointment and expires March 31st. Police Commission. Reappointment of Derek Van Loosen to a second term on the Police Commission. Term will expire May 1st, 2023. Reappointment of Claire Swan to a second term on the Police Commission. Term will expire May 1st, 2024. Reappointment of Brian Fisher to a second term on the Police Commission. Term will expire May 1st, 2025. Any comments or questions from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the board appointments as read into the record.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consent Agenda. And we'll use one motion. Pearson Minor Subdivision Pla- Final Pla- Final Passage of the Ordinance Amending City of Helena Ordinance Number 3097 and Amending the Official Zoning Map for the City of Helena for Zone Change from CLM Commercial Lightened District to RF4 Residential for Properties Described as Track 1A on Certificate of Survey Number 3198943. City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana. This property is located at 2605 North Sanders Street. Permission, discussion? Okay, any public comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move the Consent Agenda Items A and B.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Communications Proposals from Commissioners. Do you have anything Commissioners? Anybody online? All right. Report of the City Attorney.
Mayor and Commissioners, nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Report of the Interim City Manager. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. With your, with your approval, I'd like to invite Kara Snyder up to our Housing Trust Fund Manager to give a report to the Commission on the recent application process.
Sure. You have the floor, Kara.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission, for the time to just give a little bit of an update on where we're at. Bit of a mixed bag, some good news and some bad news. So unfortunately, we didn't have any eligible applications for this first round. So not entirely unexpected. That's kind of what we, I don't want to say what we thought would happen, certainly not what we hoped would happen. But kind of just in talking with some of our local housing providers, they're more thinking that generally speaking, our spring round will be more busy than the winter round will be. I'm just thinking everyone's going to be gearing up for the construction season and looking for that last little bit of money to get them over the line. So certainly looking forward to our spring round, which we're tentatively thinking will start beginning of March. And just kind of thinking about that a little bit, you know, we know we've built a really solid base for this fund by developing and vetting these program guidelines with our Advisory Board, also meeting with that Advisory Board regularly, and they're super invested. I actually think they were probably much more devastated even than I was to see that we wouldn't be looking at applications in December. And then kind of a few things that we want to add to our spring cycle as well with your input is, you know, obviously, but looking at doing maybe a application workshop that would be open for anyone and certainly pushed for people that we think are going to be applying. And then also kind of looking at maybe developing a more localized housing needs assessment or housing assessment of some kind earlier in the year. So with that said, I'll just, and if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Ms. Snyder, so when you say there weren't, there weren't any qualified applicants, was it because of the application process or they just weren't qualified?
So that's a question I'm hoping to answer. Going to get some feedback from our Advisory Board. My sense isn't that it's the application requirements. I certainly think that our match requirements mean that they'll be looking at funding like the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program or Home Funds, something that will already require them to have a lot of that information put together. So I, my sense is that that isn't the barrier. It's more just that there's not a project at a point right now that where they could utilize this funding.
Thank you. Any other comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh. Go ahead, Commissioner Reed.
Go ahead, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Ms. Snyder, it was, it's sort of the second half of the mayor's question. How many applications total were received? If any.
Oh, sure. So we actually did not receive applications. We, we had a number of interested people reach out. Some of them just like definitely not eligible, some of them more just maybe gearing up for something in the future, but we did not receive an application.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Snyder, thank you very much for the work you're doing on this. Again, it's that time of year. I'm sure people are, you know, getting ready for the construction season in the spring. You mentioned the housing needs assessment. When do you think that will begin and what will that entail?
Sure. So working off a couple of different examples right now, and it certainly wouldn't be to the extent that the 2018 Tri-County Housing Needs Assessment was done too, but would definitely want to pull in some of those same data points. So definitely looking at some demographic information for our community, probably, you know, over time, some, some stats like average home price or rent prices, things like that, but certainly to a smaller scale and hoping to lean on our Advisory Board and then our local partners as well to see maybe what would be most useful in, in looking at a set of data.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Ms. Snyder, for all that information. I'm really disappointed. We did not have any applicants, but I love the idea of a spring application workshop. I would expect that would likely be helpful to folks. I wonder, do you think so, one of the things that I think is on all of our minds is the interest in, from community members regarding our ARPA funds. And there's a lot of overlap with the potential of some of those applications and projects that would be eligible for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Is there anything that you would, I guess, recommend that we be thinking about when we, you know, are considering allocating the ARPA funds and then what we already will have available in the trust fund dollars?
Well, I, I want to overstep my bounds here, but I certainly do want to say that this is, I think, one of the barriers to applying to this fund would certainly be the level of match that we require. And being able to utilize some of those one-time funds for people maybe to lean on later as a match could be super beneficial. I, I think that would be probably, just in some of our early conversations in developing this, you know, everyone wants a grant and not a loan, and everyone wants a much smaller match ratio for sure. But in making this money go as far as we can, this is what we settled on. So yeah, I think getting people over the line with that larger investment upfront could be extremely helpful.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Any other comments from the Commission? Mr. Manager, are you done?
Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder.
Thank you so much.
Communications from Helena Citizens Council. Representative Steve Allen, you have the floor. Madam Clerk, do we have him online?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I don't, I don't actually see Representative Allen online. I'm not sure if-
Okay, when he comes on, would you let me know we have him come, come back?
Sure.
Consider ordinances amending Title 11, Chapter 2, Section 11-2-3, and 11-2-4, and Title 11, Chapter 38, Sections 11-38-2, and 11-38-3 of the City of Helena zoning regulations. Director Brink, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Collins and Commission. If you would just give me a brief minute to get this cut up. So right before you is-
Do you want to use, do you want to use the microphone, sir?
Oh, there we go.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. Probably should do that. It's a Monday all over. All day. So tonight, before you tonight is the proposed amendments to Chapter 11, Title 11, Chapters 2 and Chapter 38. 11-23 and 11-24, which is the land use table and land use definitions, and then Chapter 38, Sections 11-38-2 and 11-38-3, which are the daycare facility standards for, that are listed in the zoning regulations. A little background. Staff and zoning commission began working on these changes the spring of 2020 due to various reasons that we are just now moving it forward to, to you guys for consideration. Through that, or here recently, HCC recommended some additional changes, which we've kind of worked into our work plan, and that deals with daycare standards and making those more in line with what's an MCA, recent changes to state code. Overall, the purpose of these changes are to reduce redundancy, provide some clarity, and really overall provide some, create some consistency with the 2019 growth policy. Zoning changes were anticipated once the growth policy was adopted in 2019. Some highlight of these changes. Staff provided you some of these last week, but for the public, this is a public hearing. So for the public, just a brief summary, we've made some changes to commercial nursery and community gardens. We've added those in the use table as well as some definitions. We've separated the types of schools, both in the table and in the definitions. We've added a, to the downtown zoning district, no new casinos would be allowed in the downtown. We've added some definitions and tables, table uses for food trucks and kiosks. We've split out bed and breakfast and removed country ends from the use table and definitions. Not, not really appropriate to how the city is developing now. We've created a new small-scale general retail sales category. We've lessened the restrictions for surf, surface parking lots and commercial zones, and now communication towers are a separate, specific use. The current version of the zoning ordinance, it's actually lumped into minor utilities, if I'm not mistaken. Some background on zoning criteria for, for zoning in Montana. Zoning regulations must be made in accordance with the growth, growth policy, which is why we're bringing these for you, so we can get these up to date with the current growth policy. Adoption of these regulations, municipal government bodies shall consider regional provision of adequate light and air, effect on motorized, non-motorized transportation, promotion of compatible urban growth, which you will see some, some changes that we've made directly adhered to that, and the character of the district in its suitability for particular uses in conserving the value of buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout the city. Some analysis for these zone changes against the 2019 growth policy. One of the objectives, create and sustain a diverse local economic base, support efforts to encourage the creation and expansion of small business, and support land use patterns that promote compatible well-designed development, foster long-term fiscal health of the community, and implement related master plans or facility plans. These proposed changes eliminate uses that do not exist and aligns definitions with existing uses and ensures compatibility of those uses of proposed development patterns in line with our future land use map. I won't read all of this, this is quite lengthy, but essentially from, from Chapter 3, Land Use, one of the overall goals of that chapter is promote and sustain Helena's economic vitality, plan for and establish types and quality quantities of land uses in the city supporting community needs, neighborhood centers, and the city's long-term sustainability, and apply revised zoning design, zoning designations with careful consideration of factors including future land use map, compatibility with surrounding land uses, infrastructure and service plans, development of vacant and underutilized buildings, and then existing and future traffic patterns. And then encourage development patterns and proposals that promote efficient use of city infrastructure resources. Overall, these proposed changes are general housekeeping and modernization to align those with the city's new, well, new 2019 growth policy and its future land use map. And then to wrap up, the growth policy analysis, again, maintain, update, and coordinate our policy and regulatory documents, which is what the overall, one of the overall goals of these changes look to do. Maintain and update, coordinate, and implement Helena's policy and regulatory documents. And then through some of our changes, develop incentive, incentives to encourage business and economic diversity, such as mixed and complementary use standards, which you'll see a lot of these changes do exactly that. Not to, to read all these verbatim, but, but MCA does lay out some purposes of zoning. Again, reasonable provision of adequate light and air. Current changes, we've not made any changes to dimensional standards. Those will be forthcoming and subsequent changes, I suspect. Well, I know for sure, because we're already starting to look at some of those. Effect on motorized and non-motorized transportation systems. Some of these changes, we do anticipate will have an impact as the code will allow for more compatible infill and redevelopment opportunities. And then promotion of compatible urban growth, character of the district, suitability for particular, particular uses, and conserving value of buildings and encouraging appropriate uses of land, like I mentioned previously. Some background on some public outreach and engagement. These changes are on the Community Development's website, project page. We've put out some social media information. Stakeholder meetings through all this, with zoning commission work sessions, both in 2020 and currently, we've had several, just the past several months. They, all these were open to the public, and then of course, we've provided public hearing notifications as required statutorily. And so far, other than the HCC supporting wholeheartedly the changes we've made to the daycare section, we've not received any other public comments.
Thank you, Director Brink.
And there you see our staff recommendations.
Thank you. Comments from the Commission? Do we have any public comments? Do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, question, procedural question. Do we move both of these or is it separate?
The staff? The public hearing?
Probably do both? Okay.
No, no. Because when you said both of these, were you talking about Item B? Oh, yes.
Okay. I move to approve an ordinance amending Title 11, Chapter 2, Sections 11-2-3 and 11-2-4 of the City of Helena zoning regulations and amending Title 11, Chapter 38, Sections 11-38-3, 11-38-3 of the City of Helena zoning regulations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Public hearings. Oh, are you done, Director?
I'm done.
I apologize to Director Danielson. I totally, it was inadvertent, I jumped over your, your item, but now you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
I think it's a minor issue, but just in case, we read Sections 11-38-3 twice, and it should have been 11-38-2 and 11-38-3 according to the, the cover sheet in the packet, and I don't know if Attorney Hakala could let us know if it needs to be corrected for the record or not.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, you can make that correction, yes.
Okay.
I would suggest doing so formally, yes.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Just a second. All right. Of course, I hit the wrong one. There we go. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve an ordinance amending Title 11, Chapter 2, Sections 11-2-3 and 11-2-4 of the City of Helena zoning regulations, along with approve an ordinance amending Title 11, Chapter 38, Sections 11-38-3 and 11-38-2 of the City of Helena zoning regulations.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed, for that catch. Okay, public hearings. Consider a resolution amending the revised final budget, budget authorities, and appropriation for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022, and ending June 30th, 2023, for the City of Helena, Montana by amending Resolution Number 20771 to increase appropriation by Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Good evening. So on November 7th, I brought before a resolution of intention to revise the final budgets. This is in relation to the Commission's resolution to allocate general fund savings to several prioritized projects and to set aside a reserve of $1.6 million. This resolution allows each of the funds to increase their appropriations in relation to those general fund savings. And so it increases appropriations in the general fund in order to distribute to other funds, and then it also increases appropriations in those other funds by those distributions so they can spend it. In addition, I added the additional source revenue from the county in the City-County Law and Justice Center funds so that they could move forward with their project on the second floor, and also the SSD fund so that they could move forward with their project for the records management and voice system. Thank you.
Okay.
And those particular funds. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you, if you have any.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Comments from the Commission? Commissioner Dean.
Mr. Mayor, I just, there's a lot in here. I think you did a great job giving the brief summary. I would encourage folks in the public to take a look back at our many hours of discussions on these items if you didn't have an opportunity to see those. There's a couple of really great, I mean, all of them I think are pretty great, but there's a couple of really great investments that we're making, including modernizing all of our systems and a couple larger infrastructure-related items. So lots of discussion has occurred on this and probably many hours of footage if anyone's interested in watching.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any others? Well, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, sorry, any public comments? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution amending the revised final budgets, budget authorities, and appropriations for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and ending July 30th, 2023, for the City of Helena, Montana, and amending Resolutions Number 20771 to increase appropriations by $13,991,875.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Shertliff.
Aye.
My apologies.
You're on a roll today.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. To be fair, Mr. Mayor, our closed captioning does list him very often in that name.
Okay. So is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? Do we have any online?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Did we have the HCC rep, Mr. Allen?
Mr. Allen did not appear online.
Okay, any final comments from the commission? The public?
Nothing? It's meaningless adjourned.